Well, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. Welcome to our meeting this evening. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. I'll do the roll call this evening. Westover is absent with notice. Thomas?
Here.
Otto?
Here.
Westover absent with notice. Inkstrom here. Dockett. Bronn?
Here.
Chick?
Here.
Great, thank you. Going on to adopt the balance of the agenda. I know we had one addition that needs to be put on. It's just for the charitable gaming license resolution, and that will be number five. Mr. Dockett has informed me that he would like to add something also, which is, we'll call it Van Curler survey, Van Curler property survey. And there are any other additions or deletions? Make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Support.
Inkstrom motion, and Bronn supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. It takes us-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is the Van Curler property survey, is that going to be discussed after Van Curler property, or is that number six?
It's going to be number six. Wayne would like to possibly ask for a vote on something, so that's why we have it in the agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we will still keep it on the discussion items also.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us on to our call to the public, which is an opportunity for anyone to get up and speak, share your thoughts. I will remind everyone, this is not a question and answer session at this point, and if you could please limit your comments to three minutes, we would appreciate it. We already have our first speaker. Welcome.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside. First thing I want to mention is, the county was out to Brookside Drive, which I'm finally very happy about after five and a half years. They're taking care of the trees, and they're going to, they were here on Monday, and they're coming back two more days. And then also, they took a lot of things out of the Horseshoe Lake drain, which I'm very pleased about. That's number one. The second thing, one other thing. I am very upset over some things, and so I'm going to vent, if you don't mind. If the Northfield neighbors took all of their negative energy that they use badmouthing this township, the board, the planning commission, and especially our township manager, and did something to help this township grow in all areas, we would all be better off. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Come on up.
Thank you. Joanne Pearson, 57, 56 Earhart Road. And I'm here to note my concern about the fiscal irresponsibility that I see happening in the township. I understand that this board is considering borrowing $3 million, and I know that you can't talk to me and say, "Well, that's not quite right." But for the sewage treatment plant to make a big tank, and I understand that the township engineer has not really complained about not having this tank, this equalization basin, and it's never caused an environmental problem. So, I'm concerned about this because it seems a little fishy that this tank would expand the capability to have 1,500 more rooftops in our township, which is similar to the number that Biltmore wanted. We were told that Biltmore is no longer interested, but I understand they extended their land options for a year, so I find this a little disconcerting. The rhetoric, I also understand, is that this will not be a problem for our township since we have a rather large bond, that it's just getting paid off. So, we're going to pay off one and just take on another. I don't think that that is good management. Also, so we're at $3 million there. Then putting the cart before the horse, you voted to, our board voted, to spend $320,000 to buy some property along the lake for a park, which I think is fantastic, but what is disconcerting to me is that the thought about what additional amount of money this would cost is apparently going to be discussed tonight. So, I'm a business owner. I just expanded my space. I did not say, "Go for it and then figure out what it was going to cost me." I figured out what it was going to cost me, and then decided whether I had the additional monies to move forward. So, we're now at, according to my numbers, $3,320,000. Then we add $125,000 for the senior center, the $60,000 for this. We are well over, well, maybe not well, but $3.5 million. So, this is disconcerting. Part of your responsibilities is to act in a fiscally responsible way for our township. And so, I would appreciate if you would put that in the forefront of your thinking, particularly when you consider borrowing more money. Quite honestly, I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Ton Bellager. I'm on Earhart Road, resident now for about a year. I'm kind of concerned about this, a lot of people probably aren't even aware that there's a tax on the May 3rd. There's a May 3rd election, like a week from now, and there's a tax proposal on there. Now, a year ago, 80% of us voted against this kind of tax. Now, what I mean by this kind of tax is, how do I say it? They say that it's supposed to go to special needs. Well, what in effect this is actually doing is paying down the debt that the Wash and Intermountain School District had acquired with a special needs stuff by pulling their money from the general funds. They went ahead and paid for things they didn't have, they really couldn't afford. So, now they're trying to put this tax increase out there for us to vote for. What it does is it raises the current, which is limited at 3.8%, 3.8 mils, they're going to raise it by another 1.5 mil, which turns out to be, you know, 39% increase on that. You may have heard that number, but in reality, it's like $150 per year on a $200,000 appraised value home. Now, this affects everybody in the Whitmore Lake Public Schools, and a lot of people probably are not aware of that. So, this tax hike, which if you vote down on this, vote no, it doesn't reduce anything. It just stays at the point that it is, at 3.8. It doesn't add to it. So, you can vote this down and maybe get the school district to start, you know, get the Wash and Intermountain School District to start being more fiscally responsible with the money that they have, how they're spending it, where they're getting it from, what they're doing with it. So, basically, my thing is here is just trying to let people know, because most people know that we have an election a week from today on this, and there's this issue. So, I just kind of wanted to bring that out to the public, and my thing is, my main thing is, you know, preserve, just protect the liberty and preserve these tax dollars. You know, instead of just everybody always looking for, getting more money out of the taxpayer all the time for one thing or another, how about being responsible and being careful with this precious resource of the tax dollar? So, basically, I just want to say, hey, you might want to look into this a little bit. A lot of people are affected that aren't aware of it, and that's about it. So, don't be afraid to vote no on this. I'm sure they'll come up with another way to try to tax you in another month or year or whatever. So, thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Come on up.
Thank you. My name's Craig Warburton. I live at 450 West Joy Road. And rather than, my issue is really one of what government right now in this township looks like from the cheap seats for me, you know? And for a long time, I've not been a long-term participant at these meetings. I come to the planning commission quite a bit, but, you know, I've always looked at those packets that y'all get and figured, "You must spend half your week poring over those numbers," and if you're on a tablet, you have to do it like this, because they all scan just a little funny. But then I watched the approval of the funds for the lights on the Eight Mile Bridge, and I listened to that, and one trustee spoke up and said, "That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard. We're going to spend $4,000 a year in perpetuity to light a bridge under which people are going 80 miles an hour and saying, 'Hmm, that must have been Northfield Township's lighting.'" And it got approved as sort of a matter of fact, hmm, you know, why not? It's the gateway to the township. It's the exit point for the one next door. And it sort of makes me question what I'm seeing. And then the Van Curler thing pops up, and I first hear about it at the planning commission when the man whose business is immediately adjacent to the Van Curler property speaks up and says, "You know, this stuff's for sale. Maybe we should be looking at this." I'm not going to go there. And then you hold copious private meetings, and in the course of two minimally noticed meetings for the public to attend at 5:00 p.m., not 7:00 p.m., one with two hours noticed that it was public, and boom, we're talking about buying $320,000 worth of property to develop along downtown Whitmore Lake, you know? And maybe that's great. Maybe that's wonderful. I don't know if you, doing it without a concept in mind maybe makes the due diligence a little perfunctory and a little perhaps not germane, but, and you have such a short window. It's a fire sale. It went from $2 million to 320. Hmm, something's wrong with that car. But maybe that's just great for Northfield Township. And then the issue of the basin comes up. We've heard the basin across the last year. It came up right at the beginning of the Biltmore thing, and the presentation from the engineer was just slightly different than the one that was just a few weeks ago. But as I understand it, the wastewater plants had zero events. They are operating under capacity. And I have enough wastewater treatment knowledge to know that you treat it, it's a lot easier than storing it and treating it. And so, I really wish you'd think these things through. I'm not saying I don't think Van Curler is a wonderful thing. We'd perhaps like to know a little more out here in the seats where we're sort of sending our tax dollars in. And don't buy sewage treatment that we don't need, because we don't need the houses that come with it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers this evening? All right, we'll move on to board member comments. Anyone have anything at this time? Yes, go ahead, Wayne.
I think, I think the figures are 229,000 for one piece and 100,000 for the other. So, I think the total is 329, just to get the figures right. I think that's, because I heard two different numbers tonight, but I think that's right. Does anybody agree? So, that's the, what it is. It's 329,000. That's the exact price we're talking about. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Correspondents' and announcements. Anyone have anything?
Yeah, I've got a few things. So, the first thing is, it's not on the agenda today, but I passed out to you some photos and some diagrams for MDOT's plans for the roundabouts. They look like this, as you can see. One of the things that I will put on the agenda in two weeks is, and to be frank, I'm kind of a little annoyed with it as well, because it's kind of information that I kind of received after the fact. But basically, MDOT is indicating that they do not do any of the landscaping maintenance, and I certainly can understand that. So, once they put in the landscaping, the township is then responsible for dealing with the landscaping.
We don't have to be responsible, do we, Howard?
No.
No, okay. Let's make sure about that, because I go along with the man about the, put the lights on the bridge.
Yep.
That's the stupidest thing I've ever heard of.
Nope.
It belongs to MDOT, not us. Thank you.
So, if the landscaping goes in, then there's, needs to be an understanding that the township's responsible for the landscaping from a maintenance perspective. The other thing-
If we agree to be, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Dockett.
Okay, well, I didn't hear you say that, Howard. Thank you, ma'am. We have to agree to that.
The other issue that kind of took me off-guard a little bit is also MDOT's notion that they are also not going to be responsible for maintenance of the hardscape as well. And what that means is, now, MDOT will deal with any maintenance of a structural nature. If anything breaks, or if there's structural issues that needs repair, they will obviously deal with that. But let's say, for example, the bridge elements get dirty and need to be washed, need to be power washed, or there needs to be some prettying up of any of the elements. They basically are taking the position that, one, they don't have the funds, and, two, they don't have the manpower to deal with those maintenance issues. Now, the reality is that a lot of these bridges don't require or need any kind of power washing or sort of ongoing maintenance of the hardscape, but it's likely that in some time they will. I mean, I don't know if it would be five years or 10 years that you'd want to go out there and wash it. But in two weeks, it's not on the agenda tonight, but in two weeks, we can put it on the agenda and have a longer conversation about it and make sure that, you know, decide what the board wants to do, if they want to move forward with the landscaping and with the elements of the bridges that we would be required in terms of maintenance. So, I wanted to throw that out there as a, to make you guys aware of it, and then, as Mr. Dockett has eloquently indicated twice, we can talk about it and make some decisions, or some firm decisions at another meeting.
What I would like to say is, it is their property. It belongs to MDOT, not us. We should not have to wash it, or clean it, or do anything to it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Tomorrow is Admin Professionals Day, so I was planning on taking everyone out that's in the office to lunch on my dime, and so the office will be closed for a few hours, sort of the lunchtime period. We'll do everything we can to accommodate and to have the police department folks take any information or messages and get ahold of us if there's an emergency, but, and maybe somebody will be able, will want to stay behind, I don't know, but, you know, I'd like to take everyone out to lunch as a thank you to all the hard work that the folks in the office do. So, just wanted to give everybody a heads up if you have any, I mean, if you have any real concerns about that, or, you know, have any objections to it, significant objections, let me know after the meeting, and I can come up with something else. As you know, the boardroom construction is moving along nicely. The next step in the process, obviously, is to put the doors in and to make sort of upgrades and move some of the technology that you see back there, audio and video technology, and move it to the other side. We have purchased new cameras as well. One of the cameras has been broken for quite some time, and so there'll be new HD cameras put in and a new system sort of installed. And Mr. Warburton indicated to me via email, and I thank him for that, a piece of technology that would allow for the hearing impaired to hear the meetings nicer. So, I'm going to look into that. I don't know what the cost of it is. I don't know if it's a minimal cost or a significant cost. If it's minimal, I will recommend to the board that we put that in. If it's significant, obviously, I don't know what the options are, so, but we will look into that. The community garden is up and running. I don't know if anybody's seen, but we've got to sign up. There's some boxes that have been built. There's wood chips that are laid. Actually, we got our first call for a person who wants two boxes, and so we'll go ahead and build those raised beds for him, and hopefully that'll be done in a week. There's already two out there. I'm real excited about that. As some of you know, this is sort of a passion of mine, since I've done it before, and I think it's just a great, great experience. Another issue that needs to be talked about at some point, in the last few years, we have solicited companies and organizations that the township does business with for donations that end up getting divvied up to the Fourth of July and to the fireworks committee for the most part. And there has been, there's been some chatter, if you will, of folks that feel like that's not appropriate, and so, it doesn't have to be talked about tonight, but at some point, you know, I'd like some confirmation from the board if that's something that they still want to do, and if that's the case, then obviously I'll make that happen. And conversely, if the township board doesn't want to ask any of our consultants for donations, that's fine too, and, you know, that's ultimately your guys' choice. If you decide that you want to do it, I will more than happy, go ahead and continue that practice. For the record, though, I do think there's nothing wrong with it, and, you know, I think it's a nice way to give some benefit to the Fourth of July Committee and to the fireworks committee as well. Most of the organizations, like, for example, Tetra Tech that we deal with, you know, they have budgets that they have internally where they have dollars that they typically give to communities that they work with, and essentially, what we're just asking is, you know, that some of those dollars be given to Northfield Township for charitable events. So, I don't see an issue with it, but if others do, I'm certainly fine with changing tone. And then lastly, if the board wishes, you know, I can address some of the issues that were brought up at Call to the Public, and with some of the issues that are sort of floating around there with the things that are on the agenda tonight, the equalization basin, and how that does or does not affect development and those kind of issues, or we can just move on if you wish.
I got a couple of questions. When you're ready.
All right.
I haven't gotten to the manager's report yet, so, Mr. Dockett, if you have questions on the manager's report, if you can just hold-
No, no, I have some questions on what you just mentioned.
Sure, go ahead.
Has Jim Nelson, has he been involved in our stuff back, I mean, you know, he's been very good here.
No, he has not.
Has he been involved in the back?
No.
We maybe could have used him to, I'd like to get, I'd like to add his input, and he works there, he works here every week, so I just thought it'd be nice if he would have been involved in that. And the other thing is, I have worked, where I work for the universities and cities and stuff, and when I had the salt company and upholstery, and I always felt uncomfortable about having to give money to the purchasing agent because I did their work, so I'm against. I don't think we should, but these people were paying hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to, I don't think we should ask them for money to, you know, they're our engineers, they're our suppliers, they're our vendors. I think it stinks. Thank you.
All right, anything else? I have no objections to your further comments, Howard, unless anyone else does. Sure? Oh, go ahead, Janet.
I just have a question. Isn't it typical, I, this might not be the time to discuss it, isn't it typical for most communities, the businesses in the communities to contribute to events in their communities? I thought so. I see it all over, cities, townships, okay.
So, I made some notes with Ms. Pearson's comments, and I'm not going to address all of them, because obviously, some of them are opinion. You know, the issue of fiscal irresponsibility, or the opposite of that, you know, that's an individual's opinion to have that, and that's, you know, their choice as to what the board's decisions are and how they make them. And certainly, to critique my advice to the board and my recommendations, you know, I do provide, which is my job and my role. So, you know, obviously, we're in this position, I'm in this position, the board is in this position, and, you know, as part of that sort of political face, there's critique that comes with it, so, you know, certainly respect that. What I would like to try to do is deal with some of the issues that are just factually incorrect. The equalization basin is not a sewer expansion. The equalization basin is a piece of infrastructure to deal with a problem that has been in this community for at least 15 years. The equalization basin was first discussed maybe 15, 20 years ago, and has been a recommendation at various sorts or another by the engineering firm for the township for quite some time. It was most recently brought up at the time when the North Territorial Sewer District was proposed and put in, and that is when Tetra Tech, Brian, if you don't mind just nodding or shaking your head if I'm right or wrong, but that is when Tetra Tech sort of dusted off the designs and the plans for the equalization basin, because it was really necessary at that time. The equalization basin is an infrastructure tool to deal with peak flow during heavy rain environments, and most communities do have equalization basins, and it is not a, again, I want to repeat, it is not a sewer expansion issue. It is an issue to actually realize the capacity that the treatment plant has. Without the equalization basin, in heavy rain environments, the effluent has to be bypassed. It is actually an incorrect statement to say that we have not had any bypasses. Actually, we have bypasses at different levels. There are different levels of bypass, so there's, and Tim can talk more directly about the specifics of this, and, Tim, if I say anything wrong, just jump in. But we actually have bypasses every year for the most part. We had bypasses last year. We had bypasses the year before. I know that Tim calls me every time typically there is a bypass, and I've received those phone calls. Now, there are different levels of bypass. There are bypasses where the plant can't keep up and has to bypass raw sewage into the streams or the waters, which never happens in Northfield Township's case. We are able to treat or have multiple treatment steps before the water's released, but there are times when we are not able to have all of the treatment steps. To say that there's been no violation is also factually incorrect. There have been violations. As of right now, they are not violations that rise to a significant level with MDOT where, or, excuse me, not MDOT, but MDQ, where MDQ is knocking down our door saying, "You will put it in tomorrow." But it is completely factually incorrect to say that there is not a need for an equalization basin, and it is factually incorrect to say that we've not had bypasses. It is also factually incorrect to say that the equalization basin is for a sewer expansion, because it is frankly not. The equalization basin only allows the township to utilize the capacity of the plant that it has. The equalization basin is not for Biltmore. Let me repeat that. The equalization basin is not for Biltmore. What is concerning to me is not that the public has these questions. What is concerning to me is that this board, myself, the engineering folks that represent us, have continuously indicated that on multiple occasions, and for some reason, we still keep getting this notion that all of these things that the Board of Trustees is reviewing and looking at, which is good governmental policy, and yes, this is now a little bit of an opinion on my part, and I'm speaking on behalf of the board, or not on behalf of them, but in defense of them, they obviously speak for themselves, would these issues continuously come up? The equalization basin is not for Biltmore. They are not linked, they are not, one is not happening because of the other and vice versa. The equalization basin is a piece of infrastructure that this community needs. Now, ultimately, it is going to be the board's decision is, and with advice from their engineer and from their financial advisors and from their attorneys and from myself, as to whether or not this is something that they will pull the trigger on now, or wait to subsequent boards, or wait years down the line. And those obviously taking into consideration a lot of different factors. The ability to pay the debt if a bond was issued, how severe the issue is for the need for the infrastructure, so on and so forth. Those are the conversations that are happening as we speak at this very moment, or will be happening tonight. But this idea that this equalization basin is being built to build new subdivisions that no one wants, which was quoted from a gentleman or a member of the- no one wants, which was quoted from a gentleman or a member of the audience, is just simply not true. Let me say this, you know, the Planning Commission indicated and sent a letter to Biltmore, okay, indicating that they said to Biltmore, "If you want to build in Northfield Township, build within the master plan." Again, there was a lot of, you know, talk and chatter in the community as to why it was three months before it was indicated that that letter wasn't sufficient, that was a topic of conversation two, three months ago that seemed to generate a lot of interest. The reality is, that letter that was sent out was not a legal letter, it was not a, you know, it was not something to resolve the issue that is in front of the Planning Commission. What is in front of the Planning Commission is a master plan amendment, and that master plan amendment was frankly never voted on, it was never voted up or down, and whether or not the Planning Commission sends a letter saying that they encourage a developer to do something or not do something is not a legal decision made by the Planning Commission in response to a legal application made by a developer. And I communicated that to various people and had conversations with council, and council essentially advised of that, and informed via me through the Planning Commission that that needed to be formally addressed, and that is going to be formally addressed, hopefully, in May. There is no conspiracy theory going on, guys, there's nothing here other than the Board of Trustees looking at an infrastructure option that their engineers recommending, and ultimately is going to be their decision as to whether or not they think that it's necessary and appropriate and good policy to pull the trigger. The conversation of the equalization basin is good, is a good thing to have, because it's a piece of infrastructure that eventually this community will need, and in my personal opinion, this community needs today. The issue with the Van Kurler property, I'm excited, I'm excited about the Van Kurler property, I'm excited with the possibilities that it brings, you know, it was a real estate transaction that the Township Board needed to act on very quickly, and with some respect, the Township buying property is at a disadvantage with the rest of the private market, because we obviously do have to notice meetings, and we can't make decisions, I can't make decisions unilaterally on behalf of the Board unless they make that decision for me, and so those meetings were done very quickly, there's no question about that, I don't deny that, but they were done quickly out of necessity, because we were dealing in a private real estate market where individuals were also trying to buy the property, and we wanted to act fast, and that's what you have to do when you buy real estate, and anybody who's purchased real estate knows that. There's no question that the Board has to go through the due diligence of what to do and how much it's going to cost to develop the Van Kurler property, and so on and so forth, and that may not happen for years, and frankly, that, you know, I mean, although I hope it doesn't, it may not happen for five years, who knows when it'll actually come to fruition, but in my personal opinion, this is just opinion, the Board can speak for themselves individually as well, 15, 20 years from now, when we have ownership of that piece, and if there's a park on it, or the opportunity to help develop and expand downtown Whitmore Lake, we'll all be thanking ourselves for this Board and taking that action. Unfortunately, you know, you can't always, you can't always have a perfect plan before you make a decision on a real estate purchase, and that's just the realities of real estate. So, you know, I will close by saying this, and I've made this statement to many people, and yet, certain people in this community continuously want to put out information without having their facts checked. If you have any questions, call me. If you have any concerns, you all know how to get ahold of me, you can all talk to various Board members if you're not comfortable talking with me. I will give you the truth, the facts of the situation. There doesn't need to continuously be this notion out there that there's a constant conspiracy theory going on, that this Board is trying to, you know, build subdivisions behind everyone's back, that's not the case. They're simply doing what they were elected to do, and good governance and good management to try to deal with the issues of Northfield Township.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Well, I would like to say that when, I'd like to say that we had some short meetings, very short notice, when we bought, when they decided that they think they want to move on this property, there was only four of us here, I voted no, but it only takes three when there's only four, there's only four members here, so it was pretty lopsided to make the decision. Howard, I'd like to ask you, does the sewer plant have any money? I mean, do they have a million dollars or two million dollars?
Yeah, they have money.
Why do we have to finance this? I'm just asking you, because why don't they just pay for this if they want this, or if we think we need this?
They wouldn't have the money.
Why can't they just pay for it?
They wouldn't have the money to just pay for it.
Well, I thought you said millions of dollars.
No, you asked me, "Does the sewer plant have money?", and I said, "Yes."
Oh, I thought you said, "Yes, they have millions," I thought you said.
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it's not.
Do you know, Kathy?
Probably close to a million, I would say, close to.
But it's not good financial policy.
But we just refunded $600,000 out of the sewer fund that was investments to the Horseshoe Lake Special Assessment, that was in a separate fund, but that was part of the assessment. So, when people talk about the bonds and all that, that would have been cashed in anyway, because that was $600,000 that Boards before us kept illegally for years, and we refunded. So, yeah, they have less money than they did, but they don't have three million to fund the basin totally, they might be able to put a down payment or something.
This was my question, if they had the money, why wouldn't they just use it? That's all I'm trying to say, and I don't know how much they have, and I guess, you say it's around a million, Kathy?
It's under that, I don't have big numbers, I can get them for you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, I'm just curious, all right.
The other thing I wanted to point out to the folks in the audience, to everybody listening at home, hopefully this gets out there, in order for any development to go through, whether it's a subdivision or not, there has to be an allocation of sewer capacity. Let's just take a step back for a moment and say that the conversation is still about Biltmore, okay? Biltmore has to come forward to this Board and ask for the capacity for 1,500 homes, all right? That request hasn't even been made, all right? The truth of the matter is, is that there are so many steps in the process that have to occur for subdivisions to be built, and the sewer capacity has to be allocated, and this Board would have to make a decision as to how and where to allocate that capacity. There would have to be agreements, development agreements with this Board, there has been no conversation with respect to that, there's been no dialogue with respect to that. There is, the notion that the sewer conversation that we're having is for Biltmore is just simply false. There's no basis in it, there's no question that the Biltmore project brought up our sewer issues, it brought up the understanding and the desire for us to understand our sewer capacity issues, okay? That's true, there's no question about that, but to say that Biltmore and the conversation of the sewer are intrinsically linked, and that somehow this Board is trying to figure out a back way to get capacity for somebody to build a bunch of homes, is just simply not correct.
I would like to say that I would be very careful about, that I lived through the moratorium on the sewers here a couple of times, where there just was not, you couldn't build one house, we don't, we certainly don't want to get to that point, to where you can't even build a single house, so we have to be very careful about not getting right to the edge on the capacity, in my opinion.
And not only do we have an issue with, and just tell me if you guys want me to stop, but not only do we have an issue with wet weather flow capacity, we also have an issue with conveyance capacity. So, 1,500 homes can't be built until the conveyance is also dealt with, and the conveyance capacity is just as big of an issue. So, you know, there are a lot of elements to this, there are a lot of layers to this onion, but there's no conspiracy theory going on.
I'd like to just make one other comment that was brought up during Call to the Public, the Van Kurler property, acting as that this was a, you know, a very quick decision on our part, we have met for many years in special meetings, discussing the opportunity, if one came along, if we would be interested in purchasing any type of property, so this was well thought out for many years, and that's all I got to say about that.
Well, and I'll just add one more thing, not only that, but the DDA has talked about it, the Planning Commission has talked about it, it has been, Lakefront Park has been discussed in almost every single long-term planning document that this community has had for the last 20 years. So, to say that there's, I mean, yes, to say that we haven't done the due diligence, yes, there's no question we haven't done the due diligence yet, because we just bought, we haven't even, we don't even have a purchase agreement, we don't even technically own the property yet, or even have it tied up, but to say that we haven't been discussing this issue, you know, this community hasn't been discussing this issue, it's also simply not factual, and I will stop now.
The government does nothing well, we should not be in the property development business, we should not be taking a chance on the people, taxpayers' money, to look at this property as a development, it's been there for 100 years, 70 years that I know of, we don't know how to develop property, it's way beyond anything that we know about, we do not need that property, thank you.
Go ahead, Janet.
I just wanted to make a comment on a statement that was made about that we have no plans for the property, we can't plan for property we don't own, so you're correct, we don't have a plan for the property, and if we had taken the time to plan something for that property before we even made an offer to purchase, we would have lost the property. I don't know how else we could have done it, so, that's all, that's my comment.
Great, thank you, Janet. Anyone else? All right, let's get on to our rest of our meeting, and that is our Department Head Report, and we will start with Public Safety, Mr. Wagner.
You're doing fire and police, I'm assuming, tonight?
I am.
Okay.
Do you want me to read them, or does anybody have any questions?
No, no.
I don't have any action items on either one of them.
Did you find out anything about the one and a half minute response time that I asked about on the police department? I said it was a typo.
Right.
And you said, "Well, it could be," do we know anymore about that?
I know that they're saying it's not a typo, what I believe it to be is, they're doing it differently now, and there's a lot of types of calls for service that are entered in and then cleared right out, so your response time is near zero. For instance, when you bring in a purchase permit, so they take a call for service for that, they enter it, and then they clear it, so the response time is five seconds, 10 seconds, and they used to.
Purchase permit for a handgun, you mean?
Right, so they used to exclude those and separate those calls out, and for some reason, they're not now. We get that, we actually get that information from Clemis, which is the CAD program we use to dispatch police cars.
Okay, well, your response time is like six.
Yeah.
Or seven, so, I mean, it is a reality, when I look at this, and it says, I mean, if I call the police, they're not there in 2.6 seconds.
No.
So, I mean, what good is this?
I don't disagree, and we'll keep working on trying to get that fixed. It's normal for a police.
It says response time.
Right, it's normal for a police response time to be quicker than a fire response time.
Okay, all right.
But not that much quicker.
Okay, well, that was one of my questions, and the other question is, how much time, or how much money does the, I'm talking about the DEA officer, DEA status, how much do they owe the Township at this time, how much money does the?
I want to say it's right around the $500,000 mark.
$500,000.
I can get an exact number for you if you'd like.
And we, and the deferred payments, so, the $1.2 billion that was deferred, do you know if we lost anything on?
I called after I spoke with you this morning and found out that we didn't lose anything, and nobody lost anything. All of our payments were reinstated, they went elsewhere to get their money.
Okay, because it says here, the Fortford.
The letter's not clear.
Program finds, find my $1.2 million, that says here, recession, I looked up the word in the dictionary, and it says canceled, so that's my, where I'm at on that. You say we, they lost a million, too, but we didn't lose anything.
They didn't lose it.
A billion, excuse me, a billion, too.
Right, they didn't lose it.
Okay.
They went elsewhere to find that, and like I told you, I'm not smart enough to understand how the federal government's budget works, but their plan was to take that $1.2 billion from all of the asset forfeiture equitable sharing program. When they looked at it further, they decided it wasn't in the best interest of the program to do that, so they went elsewhere to get their money.
Okay, all right, but if they did it once, they could do it again, I suppose.
That was a concern, and a question was asked, and right now, there's, it doesn't appear that.
Okay, but it would kind of put you on the spot, if they did that, it would be kind of a dirty trick.
It would.
For you. The drinking fountains, what's wrong with the drinking fountains?
I cannot find anybody that will repair those drinking fountains.
Okay.
I've called every refrigeration plumber, mechanical repair, nobody, and they all work on every kind, they say they work on all kinds of refrigeration units, and I cannot find anybody that will, it's a, the condenser below is burned out in the wall.
Okay, but there's no lead in the water here.
No, 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 it's not a lead issue, actually, I could probably turn the fountains back on, it just wouldn't be refrigerated water.
Okay, well, that's my concern, where I see them all wrapped up, and.
Yeah, no.
For months and months and months, you know, it looks like we could, okay. Last question is, what are we doing with all the money that the police department and the fire department is saving on $2 gas? Are we putting that in a lockbox somewhere?
I can tell you that.
It's already in your budget.
I can tell you on the.
Seems like we could lock it up somewhere.
On the fire department's side, it's going into mechanical repairs of the fire trucks.
Oh, I figured you'd find a place to put it, I was hoping you'd put it in a lockbox so that when gas starts going up, we wouldn't have to cough up too much. Thank you very much.
Yep, anybody else?
I want to thank you for putting the signage on the Darlene Curtis property.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Alerting everyone what that is, I appreciate it.
What happened?
On the sign in front, he had said this is Northfield Township Fire Department Training Site.
Oh, okay, I didn't notice, thank you.
All right. Anyone else for Bill? No, all right, thank you, Bill. That takes us to the Waste Water Treatment Plan, and we got Tim here for anyone's questions, if you have anything.
The only one I had on the, this is the police report?
No, we did police and fire, did you have, I'm sorry, did you have, okay.
No, that's fine.
We're on Waste Water Treatment, and Tim, do you have any questions for him?
I do not.
You do not? Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you, Tim, oh, Tim, oh. Tammy's not here this evening, and as you can see, she has her full report here, if you have any questions for her, I would suggest giving her a call, and that's for our Community Center. We also have our financial reports from Ms. Braun, does anyone have any questions for Kathy?
Looks like a good report, very impressive.
All right, and then that takes us to our Manager's Report, any questions for Howard or? Any questions for Howard, or Howard, do you have anything to add?
Uh, I've got something for Howard.
Wayne's got something.
I have.
Why don't you go ahead while Wayne looks for his question?
Okay, I just wanna, um, let's say, uh, good work on the Arvin Sango, um, that they submitted their site plan for construction.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay.
We've been, uh, you know, North Territorial really has not grown, uh, it has stagnated for several years, and it's good to see that we have corporations now coming into the North Territory area.
I can't find it.
Yes, it is. You can't find it?
I can't find it.
Well, we can always come back.
Okay.
All right. Um, anyone else have any other questions for Howard, or Howard, do you have anything to add? Okay.
I just wanted to say one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead, head.
Um, I see that Randy Rush resigned, um, as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Board. Just wanna say that, uh, thank you to him for all of his dedication for the Dog Park.
Yeah, he's done a lot of work, and you're gonna have a presentation next meeting, or workshop?
Proclamation.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, if nothing else, we'll move on, and Wayne, as soon as you find it, we can jump back over, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, Jackie, anything for the ZBA report?
No, we did not meet this month.
Okay, great. Janet, how about the Planning Commission?
Uh, Planning Commission met April twentieth. There were two discussion items. The Planning Commission is reviewing a lake overlay zoning. The purpose is to help reduce the number of non-conformities in our lake districts and make it easier for property owners to make changes or add to their structures without having to request variances. There was also a discussion on formalizing policy by which a petitioner makes a request to the Planning Commission for a development, or requests to amend or change in ordinance.
Great, thank you. Parks and Rec Report, Tracy, you got anything?
Um, no, just, uh, to reiterate what trustee Otto said, Randy worked his, uh, well, he worked very hard.
He and I served together on the Parks and Rec Board for, I wanna say, six years.
He very rarely missed a meeting, worked extremely hard, was chairperson for the last four years, did a wonderful job, and we're gonna be sorry to see him go.
Is he, is he healthy and everything? He just decided that?
Yeah, he just says he wants to, wants to spend some more time with his family, and, with the amount of work that he's put in over the last few years, he's earned it.
That's for sure. All right, that takes us onto our agenda items, and the first one is fireworks permit.
It's just, it's pretty much the same fireworks we do every year.
Do every year, right.
It's just, uh, they need to get this passed to take the next step, and then you'll have a civic event permit in the future for the fireworks.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2016 permit for fireworks. Do we need to have the gentleman's name in there for Drew Espenshead? Do I have that correct?
Yes.
And that's Ace Pyro LLC.
I'll support.
Uh, motion, or Instrom motion, and Chick's supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Takes us on to our number two, which is the civic event application for the German Park Open Picnic that they have every year, and just for the public, that's the last Saturday of the June, July, and August.
Correct. And there's representatives here, if anybody has any question for them.
Um, I don't, we've, uh, done this before, unless they have anything special or new that's happening this year that they'd like to share with us, but, yeah.
Our seventy, our seventy-eight year.
Wow, cool, wonderful.
Congratulations.
They're gonna have beer, aren't they?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the German Park Civic Event Application for the June twenty-fifth, July thirtieth, and August twenty-seventh, which is the last Saturday of each of our summer months, uh, from four to eleven.
I'll support.
Hmm, writing over it, um, Instrom motioned, and Otto's supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, that takes us to our next civic evac, uh, civic event application, which is the Old St. Pat's Old Country Run. I'll make a motion to approve also Old St. Pat's Old Country Run to take place on September thirtieth, um-
September third?
I'm sorry, September third. Thank you. Uh, Instrom motioned, and Braun's supported. Those in favor?
I, I'm a Catholic, can I vote for this?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Those in favor?
Hey, real quick, I got, just to let everybody know, that this is a little bit different than what they've done in the past, uh, for their festival. While it's still their festival, they're gonna hold a, a one-mile run, a, a five-k run, and a ten-k run, all at different times. Um, we're still working on a route that they're gonna run that we can find that's safe for them, but I just want to let everybody know that is a little bit different. And their whole plan is to try to get and keep people at the festival for the day, so. Huh?
Yeah.
No, you can walk. You can walk.
Great, thank you. I think we had a, a voting on the table, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for Old St. Pat's. Okay, uh, number four is the acceptance of the Whitmore Lake Road Special Assessment easements.
One-
Go ahead.
One comment, Madam Supervisor. So, the two that are in front of you are sixty-four thirty-one Whitmore Lake Road and sixty-nine twenty-five Whitmore Lake Road. One is the, um, Robin Alexanders, um, and the other is a, um-
Sherry.
Sherry Waggar. Mrs. Waggar's, um, uh, easement, uh, has been redesigned, and so the redesign is in front of you, uh, so you'll be voting on this particular easement as opposed to the one, uh, that's in the packet. Uh, the one that's in the packet, uh, as you will see, has some crossouts and indicates that it needs to be redesigned, so.
Howard, you were supposed to see that first?
You were? I was not informed of that.
Okay. When I talked to the engineer today-
What'd she say?
That we would see it?
That they wanted just to see it. They, they didn't see it, yeah.
Because they had said it's wrong, so. Sorry, so. If this is the, 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 if this is the-
You can have my copy if you want it, Sherry.
Here. We're good.
Did we vote on that?
No, I'm sorry, I was just saying, okay.
Um, so I'll just go ahead and make, put a motion out there to approve the permanent non-exclusive easement for the public slash private utilities for the property located at sixty-four thirty-one Whitmore Lake Road as presented. Current owner-
Accept.
Uh, what?
Accept, accept the easements.
Except, except the easements. Motion to approve, motion to accept the easements.
I'll support.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
There's one last easement for the Whitmore Lake SAD, and we're in conversations with that individual, so we see no issues, we just need to, um, get a meeting with her and the engineer, so, uh, in two weeks, we'll have, have had every easement, uh, for the Whitmore Lake SAD.
We don't have that tonight, no.
Nope.
Okay.
What, is, is that the six-nine-two-five?
No, no.
Okay.
The two that you just approved today were two of the three. We only need one more, and we'll have that in two weeks.
I only had the sixty-four thirty-one address in the motion.
Uh, you need to have both in the, uh, motion, so you probably want to do a separate motion.
Okay.
Motion to, um, to accept the permanent non-exclusive easement for the public private utilities for the property located at sixty-nine twenty-five Whitmore Lake Road.
I'll support.
What's that?
Instrom motioned, and Otto's supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have that?
Uh, was this one here, and, hold on.
I've got two.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's, that's the second one, second.
Oh, okay, this is, well, there was Alexander and, Alexander and, uh-
That's it, just what we just did.
Okay, just those two.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I'm, I, we got motion approved there, right? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that, it takes us to number five, the charitable gaming license, uh, which was added on the agenda this evening. It is not that they have an event scheduled or anything like that, that they just need it approved, uh, because they're in Northfield Township. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution for charitable gaming licenses for the Michigan STEM Scholarship for Women of Whitmore Lake.
Where are they? It's, I mean-
Where's their location?
Yeah.
Well, they have the address of eighty-three fifty Main Street listed, listed on here. Is that their office location? I'm assuming?
I doubt that they have an office, it's probably somebody's house.
Okay.
What kind of games?
Oh, no, eighty-three fifty Main Street is our, our address.
Yeah.
Oh.
But it's on the promoter.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what their-
Then their address is not on here.
Yeah, I mean, they, they don't, we don't have an address form.
Is this sexist? It's, it's only for women, or?
Yeah.
If you read the letter behind it, it's for the, um, it was formed in two thousand fifteen. It's a scholarship program. So, I have a motion on the table?
I'll support.
Thank you. Instrom motioned, and Chick's supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Takes us on to number six of our agenda items, and that's the Van Kroler survey that Wayne had asked to put on there. Wayne, would you like to take the floor?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that, that we can look at a survey on that property. There's a very small sliver of land that we're talking about on the lake, and, uh, I, I don't see how we can vote on anything or spend any money on something unless we have a survey on. So, I, I don't know if I'll get support or not, but I would like to make a motion to have the Van Kroler property surveyed as soon as possible, and I'd like to authorize Howard to do that, and to, up to three thousand dollars. I, I believe we need a survey on it before we can do much of anything. I, I differ, uh, about property, uh, that Howard does. I, I don't think we need to, uh, rush into something here without a survey.
Howard, what is the status of the offer? Was the survey requested in your purchase agreement? Um, I know they're doing a lot of surveying over there-
Yeah.
-already. Were they doing these parcels, or?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the, the purchase agreement, as Brad just indicated, indicates that a survey would be required by seller, um, so we will have a survey, uh, and I believe I actually already have a legal survey of the property on my desk, um, and I can get that to everyone. I think what Mr. Dockett is requesting, though, is not a survey. I think what Mr. Dockett is requesting is the property to be staked. Uh, you want to actually be able to see where the boundaries are. Now, I don't have a problem with that, um, but I would suggest that if that's what Mr. Dockett is requesting, um, which is different than a survey, um, then, uh, that, that the only stipulation being made is that that expenditure not happen until you actually have a signed purchase agreement, which we do not yet have a signed purchase agreement.
Well, we've already agreed to spend three thousand dollars without a purchase permit, and, and I'm not concerned about anything on the east side, excuse me, on the west side of Main Street. I only concerned, I'd like to see stakes on the west side of Main Street because it's such a tiny little piece of lakefront there. I'd like to, for us all to see what-
I don't have a problem.
What we're getting.
I don't, I don't have any objections.
And I think, even if we pay for it, uh, I, I think it's important to have that staked so we can look at it. I know what twenty acres looks like, Howard. I know, I don't mean to be snotty, but I, I know what a, I know what the, the fifteen acres looks like about, I know what eight acres look like, but I don't know what that looks like on that little sliver on the lake.
We're gonna, we're gonna get a survey of the property, but it's gonna be a paper survey, as you know.
Right, but they should be staking while they're doing it, because the, it's called a stake survey when they're doing vacant land like that, it's not a mortgage survey.
Okay, so I don't think that we have a-
Or they specify that, or no?
I think it's a mortgage survey is what they're talking about.
There's a distinction between a boundary survey where what, what we would call irons are placed at the corners of the property, and a survey where they go out and put the orange flags down the whole property line. That's not a stake survey. A stake survey is where they put irons in the corners, it's a boundary survey. So, I'm not clear what, if, if we're asking for a, a boundary survey with irons, that's what's been requested in the purchase agreement. If we're asking for something other than that, we're still negotiating the purchase agreement, so that's, that's okay. I just want to be clear about what's being asked for by the board.
I'm, I'm confused.
Yeah, they'll mark, they'll mark, what they're doing, it will get marked, so you can see it, because when they put the irons in-
There will be stakes on the east side of Main Street, on the lake, between the, between Whitmore Lake Road and, and the, and the lake.
Yes.
When?
Well, we haven't signed a purchase, we don't have a signed purchase agreement yet, Mr. Dockett.
We don't need to sign a purchase agreement, let's, we, we need to have that, I want to see that before. I, that, that needs, we don't know what we're, we don't know what we're getting.
It's part of the purchase agreement, and if you're unhappy with your survey, you can jump out. It's part of your due diligence.
Well, we don't want to jump out, as far as I'm concerned, for the, for the money that they're asking for, uh, even if the Northfield Township paid for the survey, but I would like to see the stakes on that little piece on the lake. And I don't know why, no one else is curious about it, but I certainly am. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a-
Part of the due diligence, do they also include soil boring tests for the property?
We, as part of the purchase agreement for our due diligence, we've requested the ability to have access to the property and perform environmental assessments as necessary, yes. That's part of what we've requested.
Great, thank you.
I would, I would like to make a motion to have that piece surveyed, surveyed on the east side of Whitmore Lake Road and the lake. I'd like to see some stakes out there, and I'd like to authorize Howard to have it done, And I would think that we could pay for it ourselves if necessary.
Okay, hold on, Wayne, we got a question over here.
Can, can we ask, it's not our property yet. Can we demand that it be staked before we even purchase it?
It, it's not normal procedure. I mean, it's, the offer's contingent on it. Wayne, I agree with you a hundred percent, but I think you're a little premature on, on the motion.
I don't think so. I would like to, if we're gonna do it, yeah, I mean, I can, I can understand the, the survey they're talking about, you know, and like I said, I know what fifteen acres looks like. I know what the property on the west side looks like. I can picture it in my mind. I can see it on the maps that we got. But the piece on the water, I, I think it's like maybe five or six feet wide on the, on the north side, and maybe twenty on the south side. I mean, it just is very tiny. I, I'm curious to see what it looks like. And I, I think it's important that we have that surveyed, even if we pay for it.
So Wayne has a motion on the table. Would anyone like to support him at this point? Okay. Wayne, we have no second, but I agree with you, but I think maybe, you know, in two weeks we'll have a better...
Well, if you agree with me, why don't you give me a second, and we can vote on it?
It's not necessary at this time, and the purchase agreement already has it. Let's not put the cart before the horse.
I think it is. I think it's very important.
All right. That takes us on to our next item, discussion items, the Darlene Curtis property. Obviously, we have Howard's memo here. I do have a question myself for Bill of why, indicated that we cannot burn it down until next year.
Well, yeah, at this point, earlier in the year, we, we have to burn this when the creek is high, and, and the creek is high right now. But earlier in the year, I had gone to Howard to ask, do we need to burn this? Do we need to get this out of here? Is the board pushing to get it out of there? And, and he didn't indicate that there was really any, you know, pressure to get, get it out of here now. Because it takes a couple of months to, to plan a burn like that, and so I would've had to have started a couple of months ago. So, um, and if I start now, I'm afraid there won't be enough. The creek won't be a high, high enough. But what I did do is I got an estimate if the board's interested in demolishing it. I would, i- i- if you wanted that parking lot, or if you want that parking lot there within the next year, then go ahead and demolish it. But, but we can use it still for training. And, and there's a couple of countywide trainings coming up, but it's, sometimes it's hard to find a, a structure to train in like that. But right, right now, it would be difficult for a couple of reasons. One, for the planning of it, and two, our staffing levels are down in the fire department, and I'm afraid I'm not gonna get enough staffing to safely burn that down.
Wayne?
Well, we, but we've had it for a couple of years. You know, we got pros and cons here, but what is the cost to tear it down?
The quote that I got was fifteen thousand one hundred dollars.
Did you only get one?
Well, yeah, I, I actually got one for the house next door, too, and then I was, didn't realize that we lost that property. So, I had asked Howard if he wanted, I knew somebody that did it. He does it for other municipalities. So I had him come out and bid them both, and then I was told that...
Have you got any money, Howard? Have you, did you get any bids?
No, I did not get any bids. I was gonna wait until tonight, and then depending on what the board wants to do, we can either get more bids, we can get two additional bids, so we have three total bids, or we can, you know, wait and, and burn it down. I, I, I take responsibility, because Mr. Wagner did ask me about this a while ago, and I thought it was fine to leave it up for their training purposes, so, you know, that, this one's on me if, if, if I incorrectly read the board.
Go ahead, Jen.
So are you still using it, or can you still use it for training purposes? Is it still useful?
We do, yeah, yes.
I would say as long as you keep the debris around it.
Well, and, and I know Marilyn had a concern about that, so we did go up there and clean a bunch of the stuff up, and put the sign up, and we actually cut down a couple more of those bushes, just to try to clean it up and make it look a little nicer. If there's anything else that anybody wants done, we can do that, too. We're trying to not damage the outside of the house, because in the last month before we actually burn it down, we'll actually put holes in the roofs and take out the windows and do some stuff that we have to do before we burn it. But we don't want it to be an eyesore and sit there for a long time, so...
Right. And I understand, you know, I love that you guys can get the training out of it, but I think that we should eventually put an end date to it.
And, and if, if the board wants to tear it down, we can find other, we can find other...
I don't think anyone wants to spend fifteen thousand dollars to, you know, go, but, but maybe, you know, get your plans in order, so next time that your creek is high, that you, you know, could plan on it.
No, yeah, that's fine. I, I, and again, I, we probably could've done it. We would be doing it in late March is kind of the target.
What about fall? Is the creek, if it's a wet...
If you have, if you know that you're gonna have a wet, wet summer and the creek is high, the idea, the thing you like about March is everybody's windows are still closed, so the smoke's not gonna bother people, and everything is wet around it. You, you don't have to worry about embers, you know, floating away. It's just, it's just the, for that particular one, because there are some challenges that come along with burning that particular house. Water supply being one of them, and not closing down, we don't want to have to close down Main Street except for, maybe for a half hour period at the end of the fire. Most of the time, Main Street will be kept open.
So you would like to do it in the month of March? Not the month of November, or anything like that?
No, I'm just afraid that November, no, I just, I don't think the creek will be high at that point. It's not generally, and people's windows are open. You really want about a thirty-five or forty degree day. Even if there's a little snow on the ground, that's still good.
Okay. Wayne, go ahead.
I would, I would like to see more bids on tearing it down. Howard, would you elaborate a little bit on the railroad property that's...
The what?
The railroad property that we may buy, the, the piece of, there's a forty foot piece or something in there, can you...
I think he's talking about the one that you won in tax.
Are we going anywhere with that? Are we working on that?
Yeah, we're waiting to hear back from M.Rail. We are in the process of purchasing that property, and we're waiting to hear back from M.Rail as to, as to what requirements they're gonna put on the purchase of that, and as to what ultimately the cost of that will be.
Well, it'll be very cheap.
Of course it will be.
But I, we need to keep after them.
Yes, sir.
Because they, they tend to...
They are very slow.
Yes.
Very slow.
So, but if, if we call them every little while, I, I think we can...
We do.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So you're, you're gonna stay on that?
Absolutely.
All right, any further...
It was, it was a funny situation, if anybody wants to know how it got. The, the M.Rail had inquiries from the township, inquiries from the library, and the library no longer needed the property from M.Rail. And so they assumed that that inquiry, when they no longer needed the property from M.Rail, was the township's piece. And so after a few months of not hearing anything, I called the M.Rail folks and say, "Haven't heard anything," and they said, "Well, we were told that you didn't want the property anymore." And I said, "Well, who said that?" And they said, "Well, from the director of the library." And I says, "How is the director of the library saying the township doesn't want to buy property?" And then we realized how the mix-up occurred. But, so that was one reason for the delay. But yes, Mr. Dockett, we, I probably follow up with them once every few weeks.
Thank you very much.
They were out there surveying, or not surveying, but they were out there reviewing just a few weeks ago as we talked.
Anything else on the Dar...
Is there a basement in that house, Bill? Or Darlene doesn't have a basement? The house might have a basement.
In, in the Darlene Curtis property house?
Yeah.
So there's not a basement, but there is a little kind of a walk-in cellar for the...
Cross space or something.
For the water softener and the well.
Okay, thank you.
Water tank.
All right, anything else on this discussion item? No? All right, that takes us to number two, with the Van Curler property. I know we've covered a lot already. Is there anything in addition that we would like to talk about?
I would like to say that I think we need a survey on the property.
Anything else from anyone? No? All right, then I guess we have covered everything on number two. Number three, equalization basin. I know Brian's here in the audience, if anyone has any questions, do we, what, how do you want to, go forward, do you want? You want to take the...
Uh, yeah, I can get started. You know, apologize for the long-winded conversation earlier at the start of the meeting, but as I indicated, I, I, I do think that the equalization basin is something that we need to consider. I personally believe that we should move forward with it, but obviously, there are a lot of factors. At the very least, I think the board really needs to take a long consideration on this. And with that, when we, when we completed the sewer studies in terms of our capacity, and the need for the equalization basin came up, and recently, we completed the understanding of our conveyance capacity as well, we, I essentially discovered that there is an existing debt service that the sewer department has that is coming due. And I think that there's an opportunity, if, if the board wishes to move forward with this piece of infrastructure, there's an opportunity to do that without any change in rates and without any increase in debt service. And in your packet, I've provided some numbers that Rick prepared that I worked with him on, and it essentially shows, and this is a cash flow projection, so this, this doesn't take into consideration any of the existing monies in the sewer treatment plant. This only looks at what a net positive or a net negative would be over the next, let's see, eight years or ten years on here. And as you can see, in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, you start seeing a net positive from where we are today of two hundred fifty-nine thousand. That drops a little bit, and then starts increasing and sort of levels itself out. In addition to that, so what it's, what it's saying to you is the decrease of debt service that's gonna come off in those years allow you the opportunity to issue that debt if you wish, and not have a fiscal impact towards the folks in the, in the sewer, in the sewer districts. I will also note for a factual basis that these funds would come from the sewer districts. They would not be coming from the general fund, and they would not be borne by the residents through the general fund. Obviously, as we've discussed in the past, with any kind of municipal debt offering, you will have to pledge the full faith and credit of the general fund. But the, the dollars to pay back those debt issuances will come from the sewer treatment plant fund. So that's sort of a net cash flow chart that you have there. And then in addition, and unfortunately, I hate to say this, but Ryan Benzinski, who is our financial advisor, put these documents together, and a few weeks ago, he passed away. And, no, not, he was, he was thirty-three, thirty-two or thirty-three. And so it's really tragic, and I look at these documents, and I think, I talked to the guy three weeks ago. But anyway, so these sources are sort of debt schedules were put together to show you what, and we don't have precise numbers, but to show you, well, what would a three million dollar debt service schedule look like over twenty years, and what would those payments be? And as you can see, at three and a quarter percent, total principal and interest would be around that two thirteen, two fifteen number. And at four and a quarter, a little higher, to the two thirties, if you go flip back to your cash flow projection sheets, you'll see, you know, that the, the fund can support those kind of numbers. So what all this is saying is that if you all think that the equalization basin is something that is needed and, and necessary, I believe that you have the existing cash flow to do it without having any impact. That being said, you know, I leave it to Mr. Rubel and Mr. Hardesty to talk specifically in more detail about the piece of infrastructure and whether they think it's needed.
Go ahead, Janet.
So, when we had our last, when we had the joint meeting with the planning commission and the township board, and had the presentation on the sewer system, I was concerned, excuse me, hearing that we even had events where we had to bypass some of the process when we had a higher flow. And I'm wondering, I know there's been some commentary, well, you know, we haven't had an issue, there's never been a problem, why should we do this now? You know, it could go on...
If you talk in there, I can hear you.
It could go on forever with not an incident. What would be the, what would be the cost to the township if there was an environmental issue where we had an incident where we could not control the, the process? Or, I mean, environmentally, what would be the impact, and what would be the expense to have it cleaned up?
I can't speak to if the DEQ would fine us or not. I really don't know if they would or not, since how we have never had one like that. As far as cleaning it up, there's, there's really nothing to clean up, because it would go into the Horseshoe Lake drain, which eventually goes down through the Rod and Gun Club, through the chain of lakes. What we would have to do would be to, and what we always do, is increase our chlorine to try and kill any bacteria that we may be bypassing.
Wouldn't be impacting any nearby waterways?
Yeah, in essence, he was saying it would be going directly into the, the waterways, any overflow.
The overflow would go into the waterway. Whether we could feed enough chlorine to kill all the bacteria, I, I really can't answer that. Depends on the flow. But we would feed as much as we possibly could, minimize as much as we possibly could.
And I've heard in the past, you, and maybe, you know, you could correct me if I'm wrong, that those communities, you know, that are being affected when it happens, you know, obviously are not happy about it, and have brought it to everyone's attention at times, you know, because of the chain of lakes over there?
Yeah, the lawsuit, I believe, happened, boy, twenty-some years ago. Our main pumping station that everything came to had a failure. It filled, it was a dry station that you climb down into. It had a failure where it filled up with sewage. Something broke inside there. And so as a consequence of that, we did have to bypass all the sewage right directly into the creek. And that's what happened at that point in time. So none of that did make it to the, the treatment plant. And that's what that event was about.
If the DEQ was to, you know, fine you, what are, what is their fee schedule? What is their fine schedule?
Actually, I don't know if the DEQ did, but Hamburgers did, I mean, I don't think the DEQ did anything.
DEQ did not fine us, Hamburg...
No.
Hamburg, right.
Yeah, but the downstream people did not like it very well.
Right, we want to be good neighbors.
And that's what we had the lawsuit with.
Right, mhm. If the DEQ does fine, a fine for any events, what, what is...
I really don't know what the fines would be. I believe, just from other ones that have happened, it depends on what, what it is, how many times you've had occurrences, and how bad it is.
I just want to make a comment, and because we, I know Howard spent some time on this, but this is really the right thing to do. We, this has been before many boards, and has been, there's a judgment on the township on this, and we have to take care of it. It's just the right thing for our citizens to do. It's, it's our responsibility to take care of this for the community. So there isn't an issue with, with disturbing other townships because of something that happens in our township.
Absolutely, I agree with you a hundred percent. Wayne, did you have something?
Well, that was, it was a malfunction of, of the thing that, that caused the problem before.
I understand.
Which could, we could always get a malfunction. So it wasn't the fact that we didn't have a tank, I don't think. It was, it was just that, that the, the equipment broke down is what happened.
At that particular one, at the lawsuit, one...
Now I don't know what, now I don't know what it would be, but at that time...
But we do want to preserve our water quality in our community, and obviously, our neighboring communities are, inland lakes are precious to us, so... Anyone else have any other comments?
I just kind of agree with, with what everyone's saying. I wish that there were some people at the meetings who would speak their point of view if they were downstream, because, because we hear a lot from people who are not on the sewer, who are not going to be affected at all, who also ask us to take care of the environment, preserve nature, preserve the beauty, and then say, "Nothing's gonna happen. Nothing's happened so far." And if you've been on the earth as long as I have, you know that nothing's gonna happen. As said, I'd just like to hear from some of the people who are downstream to see if they would be so cavalier about, with that attitude, "Well, don't worry, you know, if you dump in there, that's okay with us."
With, with the exception of, and Brian Rubel can speak more directly, and we've said this at multiple meetings, with the exception of, you know, a house here and a house there, and a small number of REUs here and a small number of REUs there, without the equalization basin, we're done. There's no capacity. So, and, you know, the plant's not at capacity. The, the plant's not even close to being at capacity. But without the equalization basin, we don't have the ability to deal with really the wet weather flow, and so, you know...
Or the thaw.
Or, or the fall. So, I mean, essentially, you know, it, it, there is a choice here. I mean, obviously, you know, if the choice is to, is to not look at this piece of infrastructure, that's, that's obviously a choice. But that choice, the repercussions of that choice is, in good faith, you, you can't allow, and we're not talking about development in the rural area, you can't allow development in the Whitmore Lake area, except a little thing here and a little thing there. And Brian... And Brian can speak more specifically about what does that mean? What does a little thing here and a little thing there mean? And what the number of REUs is. Obviously, an REU is not an exact figure. It's a sort of theoretical construct number, but, you know, that's where we're at. So, that's it. I mean, that's the situation. So when we talk about, when we talk about, you know, this whole issue of development policy and where development occurs and where it doesn't occur, and we talk about, you know, a lot of folks have discussed many, many times is develop in Whitmore Lake. Well, without the equalization basin and without some improvements, not only with the equalization basin, but even with the capacity, with the conveyance, it can't happen. So, that's where we're at. I mean, Brian, am I, can you come up? And, you know, if I'm wrong, that's fine, say it. I'm not the expert, you are.
No objection to anything that you just stated. As we, we've talked about this a number of times. During several wet weather events each year, you do bypass full treatment at the plant, which, I hate to say it in too strong a terms, but it violates state and federal law to do that. You have not been cited for that, yet.
And we likely wouldn't be cited because we're not the most egregious in the bypass. But it's an issue that should be addressed and, you know, good infrastructure policy says you address an issue at a certain time, not after it's a problem. We don't address the issue when we literally are, have MDEQ knocking down our doors saying, yeah, now we are going to, we are going to cite you because your bypass is more significant than it has been in the past. That's, that's good infrastructure management, good infrastructure policy. Tim, how many bypasses did we have last year?
I believe there was only one.
One?
But it's usually a week-long or three, four-day event when it happens, until the flow gets down low enough that we can stop the bypass.
Right. And there are many rain events where we're trying to catch up, if you will. The plant is sort of.
That's correct.
Backlogged, if you will. Why don't you speak to that?
There again, it just depends on how much rain we get as to how high the flow gets and as to how much we have to bypass and for how long. It seems to take a week to two weeks to get the flow even close to normal when we get these big rain events. So, I mean, part of the reason I think the DEQ hasn't, hasn't said anything to us is our normal flow, we do such a, such a good job. The plant was designed so well that we are well below our limits. So then when we do bypass, the higher results that we get then, when you get a monthly average, usually we are below what we are mandated. So, because we do keep everything running as well as we can, I think that helps as far as with the DEQ.
Yeah, Wayne?
Is the problem, what is the problem with the rain events? We have, do we have a lot of water getting into the system that we have leaks somewhere? How, what's the problem there? Why does it get so high?
It's been a number of years ago that we had a inflow, infiltration study done. And that study showed throughout the whole system, there wasn't one certain spot that showed a bad area compared to others. We run our television camera every summer as much as we possibly can. We fixed half a dozen leaks last year, repaired those that we have, but we have not found any gushing leaks that would account for all this flow in the rain.
What, like, pumps, people illegally, so bumping into it?
Some pumps probably could be.
It'd be pretty hard to figure out who's doing that.
It would be. And there was a survey done a number of years ago, asking, a questionnaire that was sent out about some pumps, if it was hooked in. We received back, I think it was 96 out of the 99 surveys, all but two of them said that they were not hooked into the sewer system. Those two, we actually did go out and fix and change that, so that didn't happen, but.
If, if this, this, this problem we had several years ago, if we had the tank, and if this same thing happened that happened several years ago, when we were sued by Hamburg Township, would, would have this tank saved that from happening?
No, not.
Okay, because it was someplace.
It happened before it actually happened to the plant.
So even if we would have had the tank, it was after the, okay. So it was just, just an accident, something happened.
That's correct.
A bad deal for us. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this was only a discussion item tonight. Are you planning on having something at our next meeting to vote on, or?
Well, it's under discussion.
It's a discussion item for tonight. And if you wanted to move forward in any way, the first step would be engineering. So the first step would be understanding what the cost of engineering would be and what a proposal like that would look like. So that would be the first step in the process. There's no question, as my indicate, my memo indicates, whether you start this process or not, this process is going to span multiple boards. Because engineering will take five, six months, and then even after engineering, you know, you're not going to be able to, to, it's, it's just, it's going to span multiple board terms. So, you know, that's up to you guys as to how you want to approach it and what your direction to us is.
Howard? If the board was at all entertaining the idea of doing this, Mr. Rubel had recommended that we do a soil borings on the site to make sure that where they want to put it would actually be able to handle it. That might be a first step.
I didn't know that, thank you.
How much, what'd that cost?
I recall we obtained a quote from a company to do that. It was about $8,500.
All right. You know, I don't have a problem moving forward on this, even though this will span multiple boards. It, you can't stop the progress of a sewer department, I don't believe, over an election on something that, you know, I think is, you know, should be done, is an environmental issue. You know, everything crosses over. The Whitmore Lake Sewer District crossed over. I mean, you know, it's inevitably going to happen.
I agree 100%.
You know, and we know that multiple boards have kicked this can down the road for other boards to take care of it, has not happened. So if everyone is in favor of moving forward on something like this, I would like to get it going this, this year.
All right.
That's my thoughts.
So what we'll do is we'll have a proposal for the soil borings on the next agenda. And then Brian, if you could also start looking at what, you know, proposal for engineering would look like as well, that would be helpful.
I'd be happy to do that. Do you wish that by the next meeting as well?
No, no. Let's start with the soil borings. And, but to start working on the proposal for the engineering would be helpful.
Okay, I do have some travel, it'll take me at your next meeting.
Yeah, right. Within your schedule, obviously.
Fair enough. The, the quote I did find is 82, 85 for the soil borings. I would, that was written in January, I would assume the firm would, would keep that fee, so.
Okay.
I could forward this document to you for the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll, I'll take a look at that and we'll, we'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Brian? No, thank you. All right, any other questions on the equalization basin period? Nope? Takes us to number four of our discussion items, that's the zoning administrator office hours.
Yep, so I'll be quick. So just like the sewer treatment plant, the building department is essentially a sort of net in, net out fund, which means that, you know, revenue's in, really needs to sort of roughly equal expenditures out. And in the case of the building department, if you look at your fund balance, you will see that our projected fund balance at the end of 2016 will be over $100,000. Which what that means is that even though we decreased fees, building is, is obviously picking up, people are improving their homes, having some commercial development come in, and, and that's all a good thing, in my opinion. What also that means is that the ladies in the office are starting to really, really get busy. Dawn and Mary, respectively, with building and with the planning commission stuff, it's, it's starting to, it's starting to be pretty significant, to be frank. What I'm suggesting is that, that we start having our zoning administrator, which is through McKenna, that that person actually have office hours in, in the township. And what I'm suggesting is that we start with five hours a week, we'll end up being billed for six hours a week because there'll be travel time with it. But that we start with five hours a week in the office. I don't see, it's not going to be a one-for-one increase, meaning that the cost of the $60 an hour, it doesn't mean that that cost is going to go up, $60 an hour times five hours. And the reason being is because a lot of the work that we send off today, and she just does sort of on an as-needed basis, when we send it to her, she could be doing on those five or six hours. But, so it's not going to be a one-for-one increase. But at this point, I do think it's, it'd be a valuable thing both for staff and for the community, where they have an understanding that the zoning administrator's going to be there at a particular day and a particular time, they can make an appointment if they have particular questions on a, on a, on a permit that they have, and also that Vidia can go out and look at the site. One of the issues when you deal with zoning administration is you really need to visualize what somebody's planning, what the site looks like before you make your decision, because it's not all about what's on paper and what's on a map. Sometimes that can be misleading. So sometimes those things come into play with recommendations to the ZBA, with recommendations to the planning commission. So I think all in all, this really is a needed step. And I recommend approval would not come out of the general fund. This, these, fees will come out of the building department fund and we will, over time, track to see that we're able to keep up with them. If we find that we're starting to spend more money, more significantly than we're bringing in, we'll come back and make some alternative recommendations, or if need be, I'll come back and ask for a different request, or the board can kind of go in a different direction. But right now, this won't have any impact on the general fund, be strictly on the building fund.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Howard likes to grow government, folks. Howard said we have the funds to support the increased expenditures, more hours worked for the zoning administrator. I say rather than to try to find a new way to spend the $106,000, but unbalanced, let's think outside the box. The township should reduce the permits even more. If we got over $100,000, I think we're charging too much for the sign permits, the building permits, the construction regulations, the trade permits. And I would like to see us rather than to find a way to blow the $100,000. And in here, Howard, you've got twice, twice in here that I'm reading, five hours every two weeks on your third line down, five hours every two weeks on your fifth line down. Now you're saying five hours a week.
Five hours every two weeks.
Well, you said every week.
Sorry. Two weeks.
So.
Five hours every two weeks, we'd be billed for six hours because there'd be an hour of travel.
I don't, I don't think we need to grow government, just because we got $100,000 in the bank. Thank you.
So Howard, just to be clear, what you're saying is that the five hours she could be spending in our office is usually five hours that she spends in her own office?
There's, right, that's correct.
And you're just asking her to do the function here instead of there?
Yes, but I, I don't want to shy away from the fact that there will be an overall increase. What my point is that it's not going to be a one-for-one overall increase. And while Mr. Dockett is absolutely 100% correct that that could be a determination of lowering the fees, our permit fees are actually quite low. The other determination could be that while we are bringing in revenue, we are actually not spending enough on support staff for that revenue, which is why the individuals in the office are so taxed when it comes to the work. So you can look at it both ways, Mr. Dockett.
I don't see any government employees overworking themselves, Howard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dockett.
All right, anything else? No? Okay, that takes us to our second call to the public. Once again, it's an opportunity for everyone to get up, share your thoughts. We do try to limit you to three minutes and it's not a question and answer session. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Come on up.
Chuck Storey of Six Mile Road. It seems like I had three things on my mind, one of them being the Van Kurler property. We have talked about what we would like to do with this, but we still have not, I haven't heard anything about coming up with a definite plan. Where are we going to go with this? I can tell you right now that anything you decide to do with that property, we can quit fooling ourselves, talking about $325,000 or $329,000. We're going to spend a million bucks. Get your socks tightened up right now for the fact that this board will figure out how to make that a million dollar deal. And we need to justify what we're going to do with the taxpayers' million dollars before we agree that we're buying the property. The last $100,000 worth of real estate we've got, we've had for a couple of years, and we're parking the same few cars on it that we were a couple of years ago. And, and the chief's got some good use out of it in the meantime. That's, that's been good. And there's nothing wrong with doing that for another year, in my opinion. But, but we did spend $100,000 with the taxpayers' money on that project. And, and we're fooling ourselves to think that the Van Kurler proposition is going to be a $225,000, $230,000 proposition for a little bit of, and don't call it beach, it's not beach, it's a little bit of grass next to the lake. That's what we're getting for a park. The rest of it is a whole bunch of land that needs to have roadway put into it and a parking lot, and ins and outs that satisfy the county road commission and all the rest of that stuff, and engineering fees that all cost big dollars. So get ready. And remember, there's an election coming up. And there's a whole lot of people running against those of you that are running. Thank you for your service, Mr. Thomas. And this one is not going to get by the public lightly. Perceptions count. I've been preaching that for a long time around here. And, and in this particular case, they count big time. The, with regard to the basin, if you want to see, if you're concerned about the environmental impact, and, and Tim's people have done an excellent job, if you study what, what we spill compared to what other communities spill, what the city of Detroit spills, Tim has never closed a beach because of E. coli that he's dumped in the river. Okay? It's never happened. Detroit right, does it regularly. The beaches on Lake St. Clair get closed all summer long because of raw sewage that's dumped into the Detroit River. We're, we're doing a great job as it is. If you want to see the effects of that, take a ride to Hamburg and go to the new parking lot that they put in next to the Horseshoe Drain by the Hamburg Pub. And you can see where everything that he's discharging into the river goes before it gets to the first lake. Right, I think I'm correcting that right?
Correct along the way down?
Yep. And in the process of getting the two or three miles between here and there, if you did not put enough chlorine in the discharge that you were forced to let go, it's had a lot, a lot of other, of nature's attempts to clean it up before it gets to that catch basin. And it's being held above a spillway there. And it's being held above a spillway there, where if there was something real nasty getting down there, it'd be in that spillway. And by the way, there aren't any residences along that drain between here and there that I am aware of. It may wander through somebody's backyard, but there aren't any houses along the way. And it doesn't seem to be having an adverse effect on whatever that first lake is in the chain over there. I don't recall if it's a water lake or what. Third thing, asking for contributions for things that the township has coming up, be it fireworks displays or whatever, and is that ethical behavior or is it not? I have served on committees that have written policy for two different Fortune 500 companies, and managed a department of eight or 10 people that handled purchasing spending twenty million dollars a year of a Fortune 500 company's money. And my policy for my own department was, you don't ask for anything from suppliers. We have a saying that says there's no free launches. You can say that the companies have a budget to cover those kind of things, but we end up paying for the money that gets spent on that kind of thing. My rule with them was, if it's got a company's name on it, if it's a ballpoint pen or a pocket screwdriver that's got a company's name on it, that's acceptable. But if you have to ask for it, I better not hear you doing it if you work for me. That's my thoughts on that thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Stick my head in the oven one more time. My name's still Craig Warburton, and I still live on Joy Road. Couple simple questions. Zoning administrator, I know you're not going to answer this question, but I'm assuming we're talking about the paid planner at that point? Maybe not. Another question would be, why do we spend so much time and money treating rainwater? And the third comment would be an appeal for leadership with the planning commission, because they have managed to pass a new set of bylaws that significantly lowers the standards for performance, professionalism, and concurrence. And I find it really, really, really disturbing. We can change the master plan now with a simple majority of a simple quorum. So it's gone from requiring six of seven for concurrence to as little as three for four, not unlike the situation Mr. Docket described with the Van Kurler property. When there are four people voting, that majority's not a very big group. We no longer employ unknown parliamentary procedure for the planning commission. They're no longer subservient to you with a budget. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but it just seems like we're taking steps away from high standards to much lower standards, and they work for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right, come on up.
I'll keep this very short, trying to get along with everybody right off the bat. My name is Patrick Tietrow, and first off, I'll mention that I have submitted my paperwork in the upcoming election to be a candidate for trustee, so hello to everybody, and I'll try to keep it brief, to start right off the bat by making friends. I had a couple comments on the basin project. First of all, oh, one disclaimer I'll make right away, I am an engineer, I do hold a professional license, so as a disclaimer, I'm making no engineering statements, judgments whatsoever. I'm speaking solely as a citizen here. A couple of comments on the basin project. First of all, I'd like to applaud the discussion of the concerns about the environmental impact, so give yourself a round of applause. I'm glad to hear that. I'm, of course, very concerned about that as well. Here I will reference my background as an engineer, just simply stating that I'm always comparing numbers, that's what engineers do. So my understanding is this basin project is three million dollars. Do I have that correct? That's the estimate? So to me, that's a pretty large number, and so to me, that, for this community, that represents a pretty significant project. One project I've taken a lot of interest in is the Flint, sorry?
Oh, can you talk better?
Oh, is that, is that better?
You can pick up the mic.
Oh, that's okay, I'll speak to it. Just in comparison, unrelated projects, but I paid a lot of attention to the Flint water crisis. My understanding is that was a four-million-dollar project, and that's turned into a major crisis issue. So ours, our project is three million dollars, so that's a pretty significant project. So I hope everybody takes very careful consideration on this project. This is, we're, everyone's coming out of recession in this community. I think as a representative of the taxpayers, everybody wants their money well-spent in the right areas. So I think there's a lot of discussion that should get out to the public about this project. Just some questions that I have. I would be interested to see, the story that I heard said, this has been an increasing and emerging issue that ultimately is going to have to be done, is kind of the way I understand the story. So I would like to see those trends. I would like to see the data that shows ten years ago, it was more optional, today it's much more in the mandatory state. So that's some data that personally I'd like to see. Another question I have is some public speakers have come up and talked about other communities. Detroit dumps way more than we dump. I would really like to answer the question, how do we stand? Are we towards the top of other communities? Are we towards the bottom? I would really like to understand how we compare to other communities. I'll also note that the failure cited as a driver for this project, that this project wouldn't be a solution to that failure. That failure, I think Mr. Docket brought that up, that that was a pump failure. So it sounds like a driver for this project wouldn't be a solution, so I guess I'd like to know more about the solution side. Another question I have is, my understanding is this basin has been, was discussed over two decades ago, so it's been an option for a long time. One question I have, something that I'd like to see is, if we would have had it, say, ten years ago, how often would we have used it, and how much damage to the environment would it have saved? Just some other questions. And I'll close with, it's three-million-dollar option, and I guess, what's a million-dollar option look like? What's a million-five option look like? So to me, three million's a pretty big number. So those are just some thoughts off the top of my head. Thank you for your time, and I'm meeting a lot of new people, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Come on up.
Wayne, I've just got one question. Jim Nelson, 7777 Sutton Road. How old is the sewer system? How old is the sewer system?
Jim, you know, this is not a question-and-answer session. No questions.
Okay, then I'll give you, I'll give you an answer. Mr. Fink showed us with, in great detail, how when a bond payment that is currently being paid on the existing sewer system disappears in, I think it's two years, one or two years, we suddenly gain two or two-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars in headroom. At that point, he wants to fit in the three-million-dollar bond over a 20-year amortization for the new expansion tank, the equalization tank, and accumulator in engineering terms. What happens when you've got to repair the existing sewer system, and you have two or three million bucks worth of bond that you've got to put on top of that? Because you're committed for the next 20 years to pay for the equalization tank that you're putting in now. It's something to think about, and I'm glad some people are thinking about it, namely Mr. Docket. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Board member comments, anything, anyone?
Yes, I have, my board member comment is, I have a copy of the ballot here. The ballot proposal is for a 39 percent increase on millage, but it's kind of a lead on here. It says it's education for the students with disabilities. But on the bottom part, where the money's going to come, it says, the estimated revenue for intermediate schools, it doesn't say anything about the poor kids with disabilities. On the ballot, it says, the evaluation in the period for 10 years, 2016 to 2025 inclusively, the estimate on the revenue the intermediate school district will collect if the millage is approved and levied in 2016 is twenty-two million, one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars on your property tax. This is an extra. If you vote no on it, we are not taking anything away from this school district, we are keeping them from getting a 39 percent raise. Please vote no on the ballot. That's the only thing that's on the ballot. They're having a special election they're paying for, because they know people won't vote, not many people will vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. Anyone else? No? Oh, go ahead, Charlie.
I just wanted to make a quick comment to Mr. Warburton's comment about the planning commission voting to allow a simple majority to vote in approval of a master plan, because that was a disappointment to me as well, because I believe that the master plan is such an important document. It is the vision of the township that at a minimum, we should have had five, so I just wanted to get that out there. I did not vote for that, so...
Great, thank you. If we're all set, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thank you.